We're herding cats. Herding cats. Defamation. I think so, yes. Chris, do I have a list of people for budget? Okay. Okay, this is the, I've used this more times than I have the whole year. Overused it according to Councilman Katz. So, just in case anybody's wondering, the Orioles are beating the Yankees right now, four to one at the end of the fourth inning. So... Okay, we are gonna ta, we're taking a break from the work session and good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing at the Baltimore County Council and will now come to order. We are also providing a virtual link to this public hearing via WebEx to give persons an opportunity to connect to the meeting and provide testimony. We're holding this public hearing pursuant to Section 708 of the county charter to hear public comment on the proposed capital budget for fiscal year 2024. This budget is available for inspection on... Twenty-four.
Is it, does it say fiscal year 24? I'm sorry.
No, so let me say fiscal year 25. The budget is available for inspection on the Office of the Budget and Finance page on the county's website. We're also holding this hearing pursuant to Section 11-1-102 of the county code in order to hear comments with respect to Bill 24 to levy and impose a property tax for the taxable year beginning July 1, 2024, and to fix the rate of the county taxation for such taxable year at $1.10 for each of the $100 of assessed valuation. The county budget and the property tax rate are tentatively scheduled for adoption at 10 o'clock on May 23, 2024. The rules of, the rules of procedure for tonight's public hearing are as follows. Anyone wishing to speak either virtually or in person should have registered online using the speaker registration form and on the council's virtual sessions and hearings webpage prior to this hearing. The link to this webpage is in a yellow alert box on the council's website. Each registered speaker will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Reed, the county's director of the Office and Budget. Mr. Reed will be giving a brief presentation on the issues related to the fiscal year 2025 budget and beyond. Mr. Reed, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, and good evening, council members. I've, at your request, I've prepared a brief presentation. I'll try to be brief. This will provide a high-level snapshot of our FY25 proposed operating and capital budgets. I know we'll be getting into the weeds of each one of these budgets in our budget hearings that begin later this week, so this is intended to be high-level. Up in the budget office, we are very busy responding to Ms. Melkerson's questions for the auditors. Hundreds are coming through. We have Midnight Matt here, my deputy, who stays up all night and answers these questions to try to get them back timely. Insurance questions may be late tomorrow because we're here, but we'll get them. So, I wanted to just talk about our proposed budget and the process. Our budget is residents-focused. We have a resident-focused engagement. Obviously, we continued our Signature Town Hall budget series that you were all a part of, and for our capital budget, we have our community input meetings held in the fall. We are effective and transparent in our budgeting process. We've engaged with the council. We talked with the council in the Maryland delegation last fall about our budget challenges. We have a lot of budget challenges, and there's a lot that we need to balance for the needs of the county as a whole. We have our budget online. We have our online open checkbook and our open budget platform. We also have our budget documents going back 10, 12 years. Anything you'd ever need to know is on the county, the OBF website, like Mr. Chair said. And more importantly, we win our annual GFOA award for our distinguished budget presentation. And this is a significant achievement for the county because it reflects a commitment to meet the highest principles of governmental operating and capital budgeting. To receive it, the county has required, we have to meet nationally-recognized guidelines for effective and transparent budget presentation with certain guidelines. And we feel that this budget meets that as well. The results for FY25, we have a balanced budget, of course, we would submit to you. We sustain major operational programs, and we continue investments. In our dedicated county, we're forced by providing COLAs, STEPs, and Longevities, and we continue an aggressive capital improvement program. Just building on the snapshot that Ms. Melkerson proposed earlier, we, the FY25 proposed operating budget submitted to the council is $4.6 billion. This is $159 million, or a 3.6 increase over FY24. This budget includes $2.3 billion in grant or special funds that are anticipated that we will receive in FY25, and self-supporting enterprise funds, such as our Metropolitan District and operations at the school, bookstores and food operations, have been included in past years in our budget documents for transparency and consistency but are not approved by council. Total package includes about $5 billion for our FY25 budget. If we break down our general fund, this is our tax-supported fund made up primarily of property and income taxes. Our FY25 general fund budget is $2.8 billion. This is an $80 million or 2.9% modest increase compared to FY24, based on where we are with spending affordability and the revenues that we have coming in. Our FY25 budget, we formulated within the guidelines of the Spending Affordability Committee, and in fact, we came in $331,000 below that limit set by the Spending Affordability Committee. And we've also revised our practice of including debt premium within the budget. Our FY25 fund balance, or rainy day fund, remains at a comfortable level at 14%. I know we had discussions about that earlier, and, you know, we were at a very high level in 2023 at about, over 25%. This year, we were probably closer, about 20 or 21%. And then you see, you see a decline down to 14%. And again, our floor where we want to be is 10%. So, this does add somewhat of a buffer for where we need to be in case we have some type of economic, you know, downturn. Our general fund breakdown for investments, it's, the $80 million is broken down. Most of it goes to the, the 42%, 33.7 million goes to the Baltimore County Public Schools, followed by our general salary wages for our COLAs, STEPs, and Longevities, and of course, our active and retiree healthcare, our OPEB fund. The highlights of our operating budget, we build on our education funding record. Our BCPS budget is $41.3 million, or 4.5% over maintenance of effort, our MOA, and it provides compensation for our educator salaries, including raising the starting salaries for our teachers, up to $60,000. We're addressing historic underfunding in the Department of Recreation and Parks programming and services to align with national best practices, and I know we'll be talking a lot about that during our Rec and Parks hearing. And we are contributing over $121 million to our OPEB trust. That's our retiree trust for healthcare and life insurance benefits. And again, we've been ramping that up so that we can have as much money coming into the trust that's coming out of the trust that needs to be prefunded, like a pension, and we will be discussing that during our insurance budget. And we're funding a one-rate healthcare structure for active employees. We are doing away with a bifurcated rate where those hired after 2007 pay a higher amount for health insurance. Our labor groups reported that was a barrier to hiring and kind of an equity issue, so this budget does fund those costs as well. Other highlights of our operating budget continue. We have funding for our Fair Election Fund that the council passed with Bill, I have my thing inside, Bill 100, the Bill 101, I believe. It ensures long-term funding commitment for our midgest treatment and operation retreat. We are freezing in county tuition at CCBC for all residents for a record six-year in a row. We're expanding our crossing guard program. We're having more coverage there. We're adding additional grant funding to our volunteer companies and additional fire department personnel, especially to assist with recruiting and fulfilling our vacancies. We're expanding our immigrant affairs outreach and additional funding for language access, which we found very important during this recent tragedy with the Key Bridge, and two new Canines for the Baltimore County Attention Center, and we continue a student loan program. When we look at revenues, and, you know, we, what we're seeing in the right-hand corner, we see a negative 1% decrease. And we don't want that to cause panic, but what that is based off of is that we have our FY24 forecast came in a little bit higher than expected at 2.28% or $54 million. So, you know, we budget conservatively, and we, you know, we, this is mainly due to the one-time increase to reconciliation activity as well as increase in our delinquent payments as far as income tax. FY24 saw significant declines in our transfer and accreditation taxes by 40 and 30% respectively, and we're gonna hold that flat going forward. And the FY24, it assumes a 4% personal income growth for income taxes with resumption of normal delinquent payment activities and conservative estimates going forward, and our property tax based on state assessments in these various assessment groups, again, capped by the homestead tax credit. So, you see this, this is why we had in the auditor's presentation, you saw the slight drawdown on fund balance to fund some of these one-time costs in the robust capital program. Key takeaways, it's a balanced budget. We make adjustments every year to have a balanced budget. Our expenditures, we do have pressures. We have labor costs. We're trying to look at multi-year deals for laborers. That is not finalized yet. We have expensive other post-employment benefits, retiree healthcare, pension system, active healthcare debt service. These are all cost pressures that we are monitoring and looking at that put pressure on the budget as we formulate every year. And again, we must maintain a 10% fund balance. Our capital budget overview is proposed for FY25, including metro funds, is $385 million. Our total FY25 to '30 capital improvement program is $3.3 billion. Our capital improvement program is a living document, and we remain flexible and responsive to the evolving needs of the communities and our operational needs. We have 750 operation, primary and secondary operational structures in the county that need major maintenance and major upgrades, and we need to be responsive to those flexibilities. Our major projects are outlined in the capital appropriation summaries. Further detail is outlined in the capital budget Exhibit A, and I believe we've shared with the council specific district-wide activities that are happening with 24 in current status. If you look at our budget documents, and we'll look at this in a minute, that FY25 is a light year because we are not programming bonding in this year, and we'll look at that in a second. This is just a very similar pie chart to the, our total budget project classifications by CPI and Metro, CIP and Metro. And this is just our CIP projects when you exclude the water and sewer. This is illustrating what we, what I just mentioned as far as, when you look at the budget documents, it looks like a light year in the capital budget, but it's, we go back and forth in budget if it's an on year or an off year, but it's a year that bonding is not programmed. And you'll see the differences go up and down and when the bond is programmed. And you'll notice that that's also, we have a significant Pago that we've been able to add to the budget. This year, we have $144 million we added to Pago. We only planned on 20, so that again shows that we have these robust, the revenues came in a little bit higher than expended, that we were able to contribute more to the capital budget than originally planned. This is our Pago history, just looking at our bar chart, showing again where we've been, similar to the chart that Ms. Melkerson showed. The referendum, we are asking that the council approve the referendum to move that to the voters, to the ballot box in November. The referendum is higher than we originally planned based on the needs that we have as far as, you know, our general government buildings, schools, and police and fire. And you'll notice that schools carries a lion's share of that. Some highlights are the Hereford Senior Center, our funding for Jacksonville Senior Center, the Sparrow Point Fire Station, and the Essex Police Replacement. And for, as far as a school bonding authority that we're requesting, the $131 million up to continue progress on Delaney High School, our Northwest Area CTE School, Patapsco High School, Golden Ring, and various roof rehabilitation projects are all going to be included in that bond referendum. So, when you look at the bond referendum and the borrowing history, you'll notice this bar is larger, but we had a very large, robust bond referendum in 2018. And, you know, we are planning on this, and we are planning on this being approved and being able to move these capital projects forward so that we can serve our residents. These are highlighted capital projects, just in no particular order that, you know, of course, we're happy to share the presentation with everybody. When we're looking at our capital challenges ahead, the impact inflation is making on materials and projects, obviously, everything is getting more expensive. We have an uncertain state budget forecast every year. We kind of grapple with that, the state structural budget deficit. We have our end of our federal recovering, our ARPA funding, and projects that have been put towards capital funding is an appropriate use for that, but that is a pot that's drying up. And, you know, keeping current capital projects on schedule and within budget always remains a challenge, and as we sit right now, we have 300-plus million in capital needs, and that's between our parks, recreation centers, and our future school projects. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Reed? I just have one quick one, Mr. Reed. In the Fair Election Fund, do you think there'll be dispersments of that fund source in fiscal 25?
I do. We, the next election is in FY26, correct? So, that would be FY20?
The first, the first year that we're going to have the election fund, is that FY25, the end of the year, or is it by the timeline?
So, let's take, the reports that are filed in January of 20, calendar January of 2025, will those include matching funds from the Fair Election Fund, or will that be the following January?
I would have to check the details on that, but I know that the funds, the first time comes as early as the end of February.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind checking on that and just see what the, what a proposed dispersment rate is, because with, with what we're trying to look for in terms of savings, that might be one, if we see a dispersment that might be 200,000 in the first quarter, I'm just making these numbers up, that it's, that it's parsed out periodically, then we might be able to have an opportunity for some savings there. But I know it's hard to answer that right here. Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Reed wanted to ask, we had staff point out, 35 million in surplus is being used for ongoing costs, and I know from SAC we frowned upon, but also asked to minimize, so just wanted to ask you about the 35 million being used from surplus.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, that is being used for ongoing costs. Again, we had just such a robust fund balance that that was needed to kind of balance the budget and use as a revenue source. Again, the goal would be, and I think that in the auditor's presentation, you've seen that it's been shrinking, we had a very large fund balance, and we're trying to balance the needs of labor with our capital program, and it's all balancing this part of the pie in the puzzle, that when we formulate this budget, these are all things. So, we do have to draw down a little bit on our fund balance, which, at the current time, is robust.
Right. And we can talk offline about it too, because I know when we were discussing SAC recommendations for debt limits, we had factored that in, so just, we can talk more.
Yeah, we, I would like to engage the committee earlier in the fall to talk about, you know, looking at revising or looking at some debt limits.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed, and thank you to your team. Ms. Bel Castro, could you, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, go ahead.
We're ready for the first speaker.
Okay. Our first speaker who registered this evening was Alethea McCaskill, who's a delegate. She did send an email. She was unable, probably because we had a late start, and I did forward that email to the council members. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
So, she is not on. Our next speaker is David Ginsburg, who is here in person.
Okay, Mr. Ginsburg.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am David Ginsburg, the executive director of the Pikesville Armory Foundation, and I'm speaking on behalf of our entire PAF board, many of which are in attendance tonight. First of all, I want to thank Council Chair Patoka and the entire county council for all of your continued support of the Armory Project, especially in the area of zoning reform. Council Chair Patoka himself has been a stalwart supporter and champion of the project from the beginning, without whom we would not be here today. I also want to thank the county for their continued financial support of this $120 million transformational project. While we were disappointed with the county only allocating a portion of the requested capital support for 25, the project would have been dead a long time ago without the county's continued support. The foundation supports and appreciates the council president's efforts to allocate more funds for the Armory Project and other projects across the beautiful Second District, but we also optimistically look to the strategic progress made with the county in the last few weeks towards their commitment to the outdoor rec that is a key part and missing in the Northwest Corridor. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions, comments, or thoughts for Mr. Ginsburg? Mr. Ginsburg, could you introduce the members of the foundation that are here today?
Absolutely.
Please stand up when you're introduced.
Our vice president, Barry Williams. And our treasurer, Jack Greenberg. And most of our board has been serving in that capacity for over five years for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Ginsburg.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next registered speaker was Laura Ray, but Ms. Ray is not on. Next was Jeffrey Budnitz, who is here in person.
Okay, I see Mr. Budnitz. Bless you.
I have great news. I'm gonna be brief. Second piece, I am from the Second District, so tee it up for that.
Beautiful Second District.
I'm here in my capacity as the executive board member for the Lake Roland Nature Council, and with that, I'm actually been empowered to speak for Cromwell Valley, Marshy Point, and Oregon Ridge, which represents 2,600 acres of natural park in the county. And with that, we're asking that the budget portion for Rec and Parks not be cut during this process. If you look at national averages and even counties that physically touch our boundaries, this agency has been historically underfunded for decades, at least in the entirety of my volunteer career with the agency. In addition to that, I do want to say and reinforce a request that was asked, that in this process of this funding going to the department, that natural resource management staff be added to support the work of the nature councils and these assets that are very fragile, especially with environmental invasive and other issues that are going on. And I also want you to be aware that we have been diligently working as a collective with the administration to mitigate unintended consequences of the Rec and Parks reimagination that, for all intents and purposes, would have caused the nature councils to fold this year. So, I have to give a lot of credit to the administration. Being a finance and accounting person myself, I want to compliment Kevin and his team. I think it's a very heavy lift in a county that has many wants, many needs, aging infrastructure, and I think they've done a wonderful job, so.
Thank you, Mr. Budnitz. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Budnitz? Councilman Jones?
I guess wanted to thank you for your continued advocacy and support, and it's refreshing to see your dedication to make the Baltimore County better.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Budnitz, let me just point out to everyone here, the last time I saw Mr. Budnitz, we were in the middle of Roland Run, Ruxton Run, was it? Roland Run. Roland Run. And Mr. Budnitz...
Just to clarify, out of the critical area, but continue.
Yes. Mr. Budnitz was in a backhoe, and he was pulling a huge log. We were trying to clear, the water was not moving as it should because of fallen trees. And so, there was so much, all the residents of Lake, Ruxton, Riderwood, Lake Roland were in the middle of the stream, and I was happy to join them. And Mr. Budnitz was, he was, we were taking out the small stuff, and he was taking out the big stuff with that backhoe. And I saw the after pictures, and it looks like we did the job by allowing that water to flow, and we eliminated some flooding for the moment.
Well, and I think it really reinforces the value of public-private partnership. Nature councils have skills and equipment that the county doesn't have. They have skills and resources, so in that example, the material we removed with a plan that we developed with DEPS and MDE, that material was on the place on the side of the road for DPWT. The total weight of that removed material was 90 tons. So, from that standpoint, we have actually reduced the intensity of flooding in that area that has actually consumed three automobiles and require Baltimore County Fire Department fast water rescue. So, when you look at the totality of impact, it's huge.
It was one of my most fun days at work.
Good, good. You looked happy.
I did, I was happy.
And I didn't squeeze you with the excavator, so it was good.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna back up because now Ms. Ray is online.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Laura Ray. Ms. Ray, you are on as a panelist, so you may begin your testimony. Ms. Ray, are you there? We can barely hear you. No, it's very faint.
Okay.
We can hear you now.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to speak for a minute in support of the budget for the Park and Recs Department. I am president of the Edgemere Sparrow Point Recreation Council. I was also a teacher in Baltimore County for seven years before becoming a stay-at-home mom, and investing in our youth is very important to me in all the ways, you know, educationally, making sure their social health is good, making sure their physical health is good, their mental health, all the things. And I just think Park and Recs is such an important part for our kids. If we don't give them something helping to do, they usually find their own things to do. They get the social connection, they learn invaluable life lessons in these team sports and all the different activities that they do. And I also testified at the town hall meeting. I had some data, and I misplaced it, I don't know where it is at the moment, but I do know Baltimore County is below our neighboring counties and the national average when it comes to funds per person in the Rec and Parks Department. And I'd love to see us catch up a little bit with some of our surrounding areas and just apparently the country in general, more resources for our residents, and that's all.
Thank you very much, Laura. This is Todd Crandall. Thanks for testifying. Thanks for all you do for the community.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next registered speaker was Nick Johnson. Mr. Johnson is not on. Just double-check real quick.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you. Since Mr. Johnson is absent, I did want to raise the issue of the traffic improvements at Campbell Boulevard, and my understanding from conversation between Ms. Irwin and Matt Mr. Carpenter is that that will be funded after the bond sale, correct? In the summer? That's part of the supplemental that's gonna be brought forward, correct? Okay. Well, thank you. I do want to thank the administration. The Campbell Boulevard corridor is one of the fastest-growing areas in Baltimore County. I've had many discussions with community leaders and very much appreciate your support for these improvements.
Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next registered speaker is Corey Johns, who is here in person.
Let's see, Mr. Johns?
He was in the back. Followed by Helene Groves, who is also here in person.
Good evening. My name's Corey Johns. I'm the current chair of the Baltimore County Board of Recreation and Parks, so I'm speaking today in an individual capacity, although you will be getting a letter from our board supporting funding, full funding for the department. So, it was mentioned before about the national... So it was mentioned before what the national average for recreation and parks funding is, that's $94 per person. This budget, as presented, brings us up to $35 about per person, a little over that, which is still up significantly. This administration has committed to increasing funding. It was 1849 in 2019. So please continue to support the budget. I've begged for you that every year, and you have not made a cut since, so I appreciate that. But what are residents of Baltimore County getting for this increase this year? Baltimore County Recreation Parks is for every resident, which is why having bilingual park rangers to have more inclusive programming is a tremendous and welcome addition to that this budget brings. I can't speak more highly of what Paula's doing in the department, but she's only one person. Another barrier to recreation is transportation, which is why I support the budget's increase in mobile programs and events. I quite often hear the needs about more diversely, the needs for programming for more diversely abled residents, which is why I'm a strong supporter of expanding therapeutic recreation. You also have the, this budget also increases the ability for drop-in programming for people that are available when they just want to play and when they aren't a part of a rec council. You shouldn't have to be a part of a rec council to enjoy recreation. This budget allows for a portal to sign up for programming. One time, I went to sign up for a night hike, and the only way to register was to bring a check to the center where the night hike was happening during business hours. I couldn't sign up, basically. This allows the county to move to 2024. Our volunteers do a tremendous service for the county, and the budget supports them by taking over, setting up fields. It should not be a volunteer's responsibility to take off work early to go line a field when it's game day. This brings the power, this brings that responsibility to the county. There's a couple other, I did send this letter, which is a lot longer, but there are a couple other points outside of the Rec and Parks budget specifically I want to highlight. There's roughly $500,000 in property management budget that will, for increased maintenance of rec sites, including mowing fields twice a week. That it's difficult to play soccer on a field when the grass grew three inches over the course of the week. So we, sometimes the fields just aren't suitable throughout the course of the week, but by mowing twice, now we have more access to fields. And then in the state's attorney's budget, there's actually two, funding for two more assistants. That's crucial for our financial review committee. I spoke with Mr. Schellenberger, and those two assistants help bring back people to his financial crimes unit. Our financial review committee has not been able to operate because they can't, they can't take on the workload. So please support the full funding of the recreation parks budget.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Johns? Councilman O'Toole.
Mr. Johns, thank you for being here and all your hard work. I know you do a lot of stuff for the county as your secondary unpaid job, and we do appreciate everything you do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Helen Groves, followed by Kim Beard.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, County Council Chair Patoka and everyone else on the county council. This originally said good afternoon, but it is clearly a good bit later than that. My name is Helen Groves. I am a member of the TABCO Board of Directors, as well as a special educator at Campfield Early Learning Center. I'm here to ask that you all vote in favor of the full Baltimore County Public Schools budget and to not make any cuts from the budget produced by the county executive. Coming out of the height of the pandemic, our students have so many more diverse academic and social emotional needs that educators at every level and in every building are striving to meet every day, despite the educator shortage that you will continue to hear about. Now more than ever, our students need us and our schools to step up for them. The federal COVID relief funds through ESER end this year, and a large uptick in funding from the state through the blueprint will not come to schools until the 2025, 2026 school year. We need to make sure that this year of all years, we fully fund our schools. Part of this budget does include a three-year TABCO contract, which helps Baltimore County recruit and retain world-class educators, even in a national climate of educator shortages. As we've heard so often this evening, our students absolutely deserve the best. We need to provide them with the best. That opportunity starts with the budget. Please fully fund our schools. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Groves. Any members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Ms. Groves, were you here for the robust discussion on the adequate public facilities ordinance?
I was, yes.
Okay, we'll talk later about that.
Sounds good.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our last registered speaker is not online. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, so.
That's it.
Okay. If any of the members have any questions or comments to share, we're going to close this session of the public hearing. Closed. And now we're going to return, oh, wait a minute, your finger's in the air, you have to close.